Okay, let's call this meeting in order. This is a regular session. Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas, August night, 2022. It's about nine, 10, 9/11. Okay, and we have this for the court. Let the record show Commissioner Korbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire present. Commissioner Wilson is not here this morning. If we would all rise, Lee is going to lead us in the pledges and Sheriff Flanders is going to lead us.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity that we could meet free from harm, Lord. I just ask, Lord, to be with the judge, the commissioners, as we go through this Commissioners Court this morning and each agenda item that they address in a way that they know is best for the county, Lord. I ask a blessing on them, a blessing on everybody in this room, Lord. I'm just thankful, Lord, for the recent rains we've had. You know our needs, Lord, so you know we need more. And I'd ask that you just let it come, Lord, let it rain. And, Lord, thank you for all the blessings. Thank you for your Son Jesus that died on the cross for our sins. And, Lord, when we fall short, I ask that you forgive us. In your Son Jesus' name, pray. Amen. Prophesies and proclamations. Ms. James, how are you doing this morning? All righty, we have a good one. Another State Historical Service Award 2021 Texas Historical Commission. Why don't you come up and visit us? You're not in again. Yeah.
Ten years.
Ten years. This is Texas Historical Commission presents its 2021 State Historical Service Award to Liberty County Historical Commission, recognition of its active preservation program. And it is, y'all are everywhere.
We try to be. We try to be.
Yeah, congratulations. Once again, y'all have a great program. You have a great group that meets with you. It's Monday nights. Sometimes it'll be rough for all of us to get there. But it is good. It's really good.
Attendance is coming up again after COVID, so that's a good thing.
That's what we've had. We've had a little bit of dose of that. So, anyway, tell us what you're working on now.
Well.
First of all, I'm going to hand this to you.
Thank you. You're so pleased. This award is given by the Texas Historical Commission based on the crooked. Okay, sorry. Thank you, LaBarta. It's based on our annual reporting, and of course, it's for the previous year, 2021. Our different programs are broad ranging, and you've heard of many of them probably on Facebook or articles in the newspaper. But we do programs in education. Primarily, we're trying to target the youth in our county. Also, we have educational programs at our quarterly meetings. The public's attendance invited to attend. They're always very interesting. We just recently had a program on the steamships, the paddle wheelers and side wheelers that traveled up and down the Texas coast of the Trinity River in the 19th century. And that had a large attendance, and we were honored that and surprised by the Trinity River Authority showing up and giving us a little insight into their plans for the future. But we also do a lot of cemetery work, cemetery preservation work, and probably the most visible and the one part of our program that you, the general public, was probably more familiar with is our marker program. We have two programs. We have a, of course, the state historical marker through the State Historical Commission, but we also have a county marker program for lesser known bits of our local history that probably wouldn't pass the regional appeal that is part of the criteria for a state historical marker. It's very valuable. You probably have noticed that we mark a lot of African-American churches that have been here for, you know, some for 150 years. So those are just a few of the things that we do. We just finished the marker, the marker window, that we call it, where we apply some historical markers. And I'm happy to tell you that we did get two, we applied for two markers. We are granted two markers. It's very competitive because the Historical Commission, Texas Historical Commission, only approves about 160 markers across the whole state. And, but we, both of our markers were approved. One is for Bailey's Corner. If you know where Harold's Square is, I know that Judge Chambers does. It's connected to his family. The vindicator office used to be there, many other businesses, but also Dr. Bailey, who was long forgotten mostly by people in Liberty, but was very important in the early settlement of the county. We were granted a marker for that history. And also, what I'm very proud to announce is recorded historic Texas landmark designation for the Pounds House in Dezetta. We, there are no, there are no historical markers up there, and we need them all over the county. So we did a lot of research and came up with a good application, and that's a very special designation that will protect that building, the home of the Pounds in Dezetta, for many years to come. But those are just a few highlights of some of the things that we've been doing. We always appreciate the Commissioners Court's support of the Liberty County Historical Commission.
We appreciate y'all.
But I would encourage you all to get involved with the Historical Commission, and please attend our meetings. You're most welcome, and learn more about what we have going on in our county insofar as preservation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate everything you do. It's always there. Let's get it framed. Yeah. I know there's some folks here with the Historical Commission. Y'all stand up.
Yes, please.
Okay, no one signed up for public comment this morning, so we'll move right along. Declare conflicts of interest. Anyone have any conflicts today?
Number 24.
Number 24, okay. Mr. Whitmire will stay on number 24 today, okay? Consider agenda. Y'all all had the opportunity to look over the consent agenda, and Angela, do you have any add-ons to that?
We have two. I have two budget amendments. One from JCP5. It is for $1,825. They are decreasing education and increasing their office expenses. I have one to the tax office for $800, decreasing education and training and increasing their adult steps.
Angela, thank you.
I do. Thank you, Greg. We have an additional payoff vacation time for Mr. Fontenot, who retired from the county attorney's office, and the total amount is $4,845. It's certainly not a sense that we need to get paid.
We request pass the consent agenda with the addition.
Got a motion from Greg, Sigourney, and David to pass or pass the consent agenda this morning. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, regular agenda. First things first, 8.1 considers through the first amendment to grant contract to allow the name change of the service provider from Aprus Incorporated to Aprus Insights LLC. Matthew, well, it's just a name change on the document for the grant. Motion from David, second, Brewster. Discussion. All favor say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two. Discuss and potential action shall occur regarding the approval of a Chapter 381 Economic Development Agreement between Liberty County and Liberty Capstone Properties LLC, pursuant to Chapter 381 of the Texas Local Government Code and other authority. And Mr. Kimbrough, Chuck Kimbrough with Bickerstaff is here this morning. Chuck, would you care to address this at this time? And we'll get it all out in the clearing. Get the weeds past us.
Where you want me to?
Come on up here, so Greg can hear you.
I can hear you.
Yeah.
I was trying to stay off the roof.
Sorry. That'd be good. Thank you.
I was asked to become involved on a proposed chap, what we call a Chapter 381 agreement that the county had been negotiating with an entity, a business entity, a healthcare facility entity here in the county called Liberty Capstone Properties LLC. They're putting in, they have put in a health clinic facility about the street address, just located at the corner of Jefferson Drive and Crossland Street in the city of Liberty, Liberty County, Texas. And when I got the matter to start working on, it was my understanding that the company had obtained and negotiated and obtained a Chapter 381 Economic Development Agreement with the city of Liberty. Now, I haven't seen that document.
The 380.
I'm sorry. Right, you're correct. Good catch. For cities, it's 380. For counties, it's 381 of the local government code. So I'm just made a good catch on that. I had not seen that document, but I've been told that it exists. And it was the basic fine lawyer here in this county was representing Liberty Capstone Properties, and he forwarded to me the paper that they used for the City of Liberty matter. Now, it's a little bit different when you're talking about counties, so we had to change the document up. You have in front of you a proposed vote order with the document attached. Have I got a copy? Yes, it has these, what we call base numbers in the top right-hand corner. First page of the order is one, and the last page of the document is 22. Now, Chapter 381 of the Local Government Code is a place where counties are authorized to engage in economic development matters using their discretion, lawful authority, and best business judgment. Meaning, you don't have to do it all the time or anytime, but when things come along, you exercise your discretion and judgment and decide to do one or not. It's my understanding that because of the very significant idea of healthcare anywhere in Texas, anywhere in Texas, that this county, this Commissioners Court, was very much interested in seeing if it could negotiate and execute a Chapter 381 Economic Development Agreement, Liberty Capstone Properties, because of that requirement. And so this order memorializes that desire, along with the support, the legs underneath it, the statutes that you can do. And what statute? We're talking about Chapter 381 of the Local Government Code, and it lays out that a county can make economic development grants of money to business entities to further the economic development of the county. And that is what this agreement attempts to do. Want me to go through it?
Don't forget there. I might add, we've been on this for at least nine months. It's like the baby finally got here. So, Glenn, you understand that. It, you know, we started on this before, prior to dirt being turned. It just took a while to get through weeds. And, you know, once we have our the agreement from the city, we could review, then look at our our participation in percentage numbers, and Brother Rick, you could help me on that, on percentage numbers, and then the term of the agreement. You know, is it for five, 10, 15 years, whatever. That's pretty much what we're looking at. So what is the determination of the court? And that's why we engaged Chuck and Bickerstaff to help us along with this matter, because this is not going to be the last one we see, okay, because of the nature of development in Liberty County. You know, there's a lot of tools in the toolbox. DIDs, TERS, MMVs, MUDs. This is another tool, 380, 381, you know, in conjunction with the city. So that's why we're at this point today, to see what our participation will be. So, and Chuck has helped us along the way, and we do appreciate that because it's not easy. Okay, I'll get off the soapbox in that matter.
The order, the vote order, if it's approved, the agreement will be attached to it, and the Liberty Capstone Properties representative, Brandon K. Smith, the president of the LLC, has already executed the agreement. My understanding that he cannot be here today because of a prior out-of-town commitment.
He's right behind you.
Not me, he's behind me.
He's on Zoom right there, Chuck. Yes, sir.
But they have executed, the company has executed the agreement ahead. I wanted to show you page one of the vote order, the middle recital. The construction costs, the deferred construction costs were estimated to be a minimum of $2 million. I believe they've exceeded that number. And the facility is supposed to provide medical care and related healthcare services to the public as a commercial business activity in the county. The total amount of economic development grant payments that will be, if the company follows the agreement, that the county will pay out is a total of $50,000 maximum total over a period of six years, okay? So the total financial exposure on this particular proposed transaction is $50,000, but it's spread out over six years. And I'll show you how to do that in a second.
Okay.
Now, when you look at the beginning with page six of the package, top right-hand corner, and to see some preliminary recitals, and particularly the recital down at the bottom of page six and the top of page seven, are things that the county must do. You must, you must grant economic development payments to a, in your judgment, a deserving business entity to spur on economic development in your county. You have to do it for lawful and worthwhile other purposes. And so at the bottom of page six and the top of page seven is our attempt to show what those public purposes are. That if the agreement is implemented, because of the size and scope of the project, it will result over time in increased medical care and related healthcare services provided to the people of Liberty County and surrounding area. Improving the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Providing increased economic opportunity for the public. And having a positive effect regarding local economic issues, including but not limited to increased local tax bases, increased employment and wages, increased wholesale and resale, retail sales, and a decrease in the number of families living apart. With all said matters, being recognized by the county, it's constituting important and worthwhile public purposes which will be obtained or substantially achieved through the successful implementation of the project in this agreement. Does that sound what you were thinking about right in terms of what you were thinking about when you began to negotiate to do this? Are those the public policy issues that you're interested in obtaining or at least substantially achieving by this transaction?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
I'm hearing about it, so I gotta say no.
When you get down to how it goes, take a look at page and page 10, top right-hand corner, page 10. That's my understanding that the construction project is complete. Correct, Mr. Brandon Smith?
Can you hear me? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So there's a the short way to describe it is, there's a six-year period that gets kicked off by a triggering event. When construction is completed and their operations have commenced, and they're working out of that facility that I told you about, providing healthcare, they will give a letter to the county judge. It's called a certificate. And the letter will say, we've done everything that the agreement tells us to do, and we're giving you this letter. What that means is, when the letter is given, the very next January 1st on the calendar, which will be January the 1st, 2023, is the first day of the first year of the six-year grant payment period, okay? So I fully believe that if this agreement is executed, approved and executed, that soon, maybe when Mr. Smith gets back, that certificate will be coming, and when it's delivered, that means January 1st, 2023 starts the period, the six-year period. And so that will be the first tax year, 2023, that Liberty Capstones has to pay every bit of its taxes, 100% of its taxes, okay? And then on or before March of 2024, you know, between January the 1st of 2024 and March of 2024, they will tender an invoice saying, we're in compliance with the agreement, we've done everything we were supposed to do, we paid 100% of our taxes, and we're giving you this invoice for the economic development payment. All right, that has to be paid, you know, by, probably, I've forgotten what the date is, but it's around tax time, you know? So if that happens, the money that Liberty County owes for the 2023 tax year will be paid in the spring of 2024, right? And when that happens, that means 2023, the first year of the grant payment period has expired. And you do that for six years. You go through that procedure for six years. So what do they get? In exchange for paying 100% of the taxes on time and in full, there's a a chart that appears on page 12, Jefferson 12. They get grant payment from the county that equals the lesser amount of the total ad valorem real property taxes paid by the developer to the county regarding the tract, you know, the land where the facility is, for that subject tax year, or $10,000, whichever is less.
Good.
Now, they're paying taxes. They have to pay 100% of whatever taxes are set out for war. That includes personal property taxes. There are big thousands of dollars of medical equipment that are going to be eligible property for being taxed at the facility. Isn't that right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
But grant payment made by the county back, you know, in exchange for this economic development healthcare facility is based not on all the taxes, but a piece just the real property taxes. So when you look at the chart on page 12, you'll see that for tax year 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, it's the same. It's the same. The total, it's the lesser amount of the total real property taxes regarding that land, or $10,000, whichever is less for the first two years. The total of the taxes are $9,000, whichever is less for tax year three. The total of the, add to the real property taxes or 8%, excuse me, $8,000, whichever is less for four, $7,000, or $6,000 for six. So if you add up the minimum, it's a total outside cost exposure for the county of $50,000 total over six years. Now, that's a lot of money, but I'm telling you, these days, in terms of economic development, that can be viewed as modest. It's all taxes today.
Right.
There are substantial money. Any questions about how the money, what the county has to do to get the money and how the money is paid?
If their total ad valorem tax, that's city, county, CID5, they're in that realm. Hospital district, they're also in that. Any others, Matthew, you can think of for that particular entity. You know, say, for instance, their total tax bill is $50,000. Then they'll get back $10,000 from that total tax bill. So they're still paying $40,000. We're going to give them back $10,000, $50,000.
Again, the grant payment that the county makes to the company is just based on the amount of real property, the land. The personal property is not included.
Okay.
That's the incentive.
That's it. Yeah, that's the clarification I needed. Thanks.
That's the incentive for the county. I don't know what those personal property taxes are, but they're significant based on the kind of equipment this healthcare facility has. There are performance to the company at the moment. And they go over after that chart, all the way really to the end of the paragraph, which will tend to exist. The company cannot get the money if it's in default. And the key part of the agreement is to pay all of your taxes, 100% of them on time, and maintain the job performance that they've represented to be contract qualifiers and conditions in this contract, which are, you can see it on the first page. Retain 13 employees and independent contractors and hire at least five additional employees and independent contractors for a total headcount estimated in 16 to 25 employees and assets. Questions about that?
It's cut and dried pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah. Creating jobs in the county.
Keeping, keeping.
Keeping jobs.
Retaining and making movements.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions from the court staff? I just wanted, do you know the city's competition on their 380? Do you know the dollar figure on that?
I believe it matches ours, if I'm mistaken. Is that correct, Brandon?
Yes, sir. This, this exactly, the city has got one seventh year payment for just some change from some electricity, um, contribution they made, so this is just a little bit less, but it, it, it's skeleton for the six years, 10,000, 10,000, nine, eight, seven, six is exactly the same, yes, sir.
Okay.
And then the other question I have, is the city of Liberty going to be responsible for reporting all these, giving the annual reports to the controller?
Good question, because we had to receive a bill. And that bill will come in 2024. So who's going to do the accounting, Brandon?
The county. The county.
County, okay.
Don't let the city do it. I mean, you gotta keep your books. No, it's not the accounting, it's the, um, the actual, within 150 days, you're supposed to report to the controller. My understanding is the city takes on that responsibility for compliance with the 380 or 381.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that's clarified. I remember that being in this agreement, but however you all want to handle it. This within law. It's not standing, the county has to report.
Now, this is the first 381 we had, right, Rick?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We've gone through with it.
Right. We've, we've looked at some in the past, but that's why we're, that's why we're wanting to walk through the weeds with Chuck on, just to make sure that we're all correct. And it is a, a new tool, toolbox for St. Luke, by the calf looking at a new gate in this match.
Want to tell you this, this agreement is terminated. With or without cause, I don't know. I mean, that says a lot these days.
Well, if Brandon, for instance, doesn't have the total number of employees that his city would have, we'll say, that's it, it's over with. Correct? And the city can have like cause, correct? Okay.
I don't know if they've got a quit clause without cause in their contract, but, uh, Mr. Gunnar thought it was worthwhile to protect both sides, and so it's in our, it's, it's in this.
Good move, okay.
There's a vote order, if you approve it, there's a vote order that needs to be signed. And then attached is the exhibit, and the gentleman's already signed it, so I recommend that this is the document that you sign. The date on the top needs to be just hand filled in, that's all right, today's date. And then there's a spot at the end for the juror's signature. And acknowledging, it'll have to be known about. And then reported in the real talking record of Liberty County taxes.
Okay. So at this point in time, it's, do we want to enter into this agreement? Is there a discussion?
Well, I was a little scared. Does this facility help our entity, our citizens, or is it just for paying customers that are already in there?
The entity is, is definitely for a property entity, so it's not a, um, contingent provider of care. We have three different suites that are part of this 11,000 square foot facility. The hope is, um, we, I have been in Liberty for 20 years practicing general medicine, and that will continue, so that's not an addition of services, but, um, with the suite in the front of the facility, the hope is to bring some long-term, uh, standing specialist providers, um, of different natures. Over the last 20 years of me being here, I've seen some different specialists come in and come out, um, and we're hoping at this point that we can get some in here and keep them, um, so our patrons don't have to drive. Also, we also have, uh, him mentioning equipment, so we purchased a 64 slice GE CT scanner, which is, um, in addition to something we've never had before. You see that in a lot of urgent cares, um, like patients ER and Baytown and things like that, and so the hope is, is that we'll be able to utilize that. And that's where the employee growth comes from. We also have a wellness center that's on the east side that we're trying to promote health, um, get patients more healthy without just, just drugs being involved. Obviously, I write a lot of those drugs, but we try to get some lifestyle changes into that, and then, uh, we're hoping to bring physiotherapy. We've actually entered an agreement with them, um, to start physical therapy services as outpatient, uh, here in Liberty, um, so patients don't have to, um, um, drive, and that includes a lot of our Medicare patients that are post-surgery, um, and post-outs. So, uh, while those patients are not intugent, they're over 65 and usually on a fixed income, so, um, we're hopeful that that will, will help. We're in, just got our Medicare approval at our new, um, address, and hopefully we'll be applying, or physio will be applying for theirs, uh, soon. I just got off the phone with the post office yesterday trying to get our suite set up. It's just been, you know, I think that's a pretty good analogy, Judge Knight, about walking through the weeds. Sometimes I think if I'd have known all the things I was going to have to do when I started this project, I may not have started it, but the Lord continues to provide, and so, uh, this opportunity is something that, you know, I wasn't expecting in the beginning, and somebody mentioned it, and we went and presented to the city, and, and so it'll be a blessing and a, and a help for us to move forward. Obviously, it's not something that's required, uh, but I do think that it'll help us move on and maintain those facilities. We well exceeded the $2 million mark. Um, it's kind of like, um, taking your daughter to buy a prom dress, I guess the cost just always goes up. We, we've finished that and still working on, there's still a lot of moving parts. We're still, um, working through some problems getting started. Uh, we've, we've been practicing, um, or been working out of there with our current facility, and we have one specialty group in there, but hopefully after this summer, we'll be able to start actively marketing to some other specialists in surrounding areas to get them in here. Um, and whether, um, in the future, we have an urgent care that's led by our facility or another facility, my hope is, is that we'll have some after-hours care, um, here in Liberty. I'm really excited about that, because, uh, you know, waiting in an ER is great if you cut your leg with a chainsaw or you think you've had a stroke, but there are a lot of things that happen, um, after five o'clock in the evening that require care, and if we can, uh, create a facility to do that, I'm really excited about the ability to do that, so.
Mr. Smith, do you anticipate delivering the certificate in 2022 to the county judge's office?
Yes, sir. Randy had told me that that's how this one would go, that once this was approved, we had to submit a letter, uh, for that. Of course, I, you know, he'll have to walk me through that, but that, that is what he, told me was the next step for this meeting, if we are granted the, the 381.
Anticipate that the certificate will be delivered, delivered before the end of this calendar year?
Yes, sir.
So that will mean 2023 is the tax year. With the first, with the payments on that tax year being straight time 2024. That's year one. Then you go five more years out.
Yes.
So it's not like. But it's having funds to pay for the debt.
Right. But I'll say this, this is a small 381.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
When you're looking at it, it, uh, but it gives us the working mechanisms to make it in effect, and then in conjunction with working with the city, we're going to see more of these. That's just it, and I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, uh, you know, fitting criteria like a TERS, you know, we've done a TERS agreement in the city of Cleveland and wanted to date, and of course, the TERS, it has a criteria that we had to follow, and it's, we took a duck lease and turned it into residential development, you know, which fit the criteria. In this case, this criteria is met for the 381, and, uh, it's the first of probably many that, uh, this court will see and future courts will see. But, uh, I wouldn't.
I had some questions, but, uh, you, after this, with you in this board here, your presentation, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, got a second to approve. All righty, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay.
Motion. Ms. Taylor, right here.
Brandon, thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. I'm, uh, sorry I'm not there in person, but I am, uh, enjoying, um, a week with my 18-year-old before she starts San Jacinto College, so I appreciate y'all letting Zoom in.
You bet. Glad you got a good connection there, buddy. All right. Well, thank you so much.
I'll be back.
Yes, sir. All righty. Let's move right along, number 3, 83, uh, Ms. Chambers, consider and approve a down payment of 60% payment in the amount of $6,318 to A1 Telecom for the headsets and phone upgrades for the Liberty County Police Office previously approved by Commissioners Court on June 28, 2022. Remain will be paid upon receipt. Lee?
Uh, Dwayne asked me to put this on there. I did not realize we had to put down a down payment for this order to go through, and, uh, this is so we could pay a little in advance, part in advance, so we can get the order in, and then we can pay and pay the rest of it once the order is delivered, which shouldn't be very long, so. It's just, he wanted me to formally request that we could make an upfront payment for this, uh, as a down payment on the order.
Angela, yeah.
That's how the record's management, my goodness.
Yes, yes, and you, yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
I got a motion from David. He just kind of quiet over here, yeah. My left ear is working today, all right. Is that a second, Bruce?
Yes.
Second, Bruce, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number four, from Mr. Dennis, uh, consider and take action, well, Judge Chambers and Judge Henshaw, consider and take action, if any, to approve a plan to upgrade the audiovisual technology, Commissioners Court, both county court at law. That's number one, and number two, courtroom rooms, the courtroom interface at the jail and the Jack Cartel building be paid from Harper grant funds not to exceed $300,000. You will note that this does not include district courts. Okay? We'll make sure that is so noted. So Nick, tell us about it.
Here we are again, so we brought this, uh, Commissioners Court a while back.
Right.
Plans to revamp all courtrooms, bring them up to speed, get them up to newer technology, audio video, give them the upgrades that the courts need. We've come back and checked the books and everything, we had Randy come down from BIS and give us a quote just for the courtrooms, to county court of law one and two, our Jack Cartel, which we leverage quite a bit for miscellaneous things, and then upgrading the two current jail telecom thing rooms. That's basically kind of a wrap. We're trying to get the ball rolling and see how we can improve these courtrooms and bring them to speed and give them the technology and support they need to, uh, give it the 21st century from there, so that's kind of a wrap again.
Well, let me, I'm going to ask one quick question, Angela, do we have funds?
Well, I know, uh, it's noted that this was to come out of Harper funds, grant funds?
Yes.
And not to exceed 300,000, so that would mean some bids need to go out, and actually a lot of questions need to be asked of our grant management, uh, for Grantworks, and we have a meeting with them coming up.
Friday, as a matter of fact, yeah.
We should address this in that meeting to make sure that, uh, they can, you know, meet all of our needs for this, and I would say as long as they can approve it, you know, I think, I think you can get the initial yes, but we don't have a final yes until we, uh, speak to Grantworks about, you know, bidding it out and making sure that we're following all the rules that we need to follow for our bet.
So this wouldn't be costing the taxpayer, wouldn't it?
They're proving, they're proving what's conditioned, if they approve.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is this just a plan itself, or is this actually purchases?
Uh, this is, this would be the full.
Well, right, because we can't be purchased, as we said.
Yes.
Yes.
On my next way forward, if we have, we've reached out to our county attorney, district attorney, since they'll also be utilized.
I'm very much a pro of this. Very much a pro. We have, I have wanted to shoot some passes, I think Commissioners Court's going to enjoy.
Yes.
And this is a jail's on board.
Sheriff?
Sheriff, the jail's on board, um. All the lawyers are in county attorney offices, district attorney's offices, it doesn't include the district court, so, and you can piecemeal it or integrate it in later, uh, they can get whatever they want later, but, uh, I'm very much in it. We're doing Zoom, uh, when it all started in, uh, 2020, basically when the pandemic hit, and we don't bring prisoners over anymore, but it is just a tough go getting Zoom work. Now, I'll point out that that's safe to go, okay?
Yeah.
You got, what, three people here to operate it, and all the time we're on no cross-examination or swearing in or anything like that, but it's, as you know, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
Trying to conduct court.
It has tendency to decay on you during the process.
What, what I would like you to do, and I think it's appropriate, is to approve, uh, the proposal and work towards it, and maybe appoint Nick as the appointment man, or, or the, uh, communicator, or liaison, or, uh, work through Nick with the auditor's office or Grantworks or whoever, and then, um, um, whatever budget, I'm not budgeting, but proposals or, uh, bids that need to be done, um, authorize that, at least you to enter into them, uh, then bring it back to y'all for, uh, approval.
That's good.
And also, this gives Nick the authority to go less or make decisions on his own, like, no, but not go over, but, but less.
Just looking to upgrade some stuff, give you guys different capabilities, because this was a, when COVID hit, we had temporary setups, and it's got as fine as it needs to. I see a real need for the courtrooms to have a number.
Also, Judge, Judge Henshaw's corporate, you know, in that, that is, you're a jerk. She was telling me the way they do things, which we do it too, is when, when you want to present any evidence, you have to put on a laptop and hold it up. We do it too. And we get this thing worked about half the time.
Okay. All right, so this is just going to be approve a plan, downgrade, and then we're going to not exceed 300,000. The plan that will not exceed 300,000. Bruce, okay?
Yeah, I made a motion that we approve with the, uh, as long as Grantworks, we can use this money for this.
Good. New motion. Got a second from Greg. Any further discussion?
I think this is a long time in coming.
All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Judge, thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along. Rick, come on up and visit with us here. Number five, uh, from Richard Brown or Texas Select, considering approved payment of 2021 TERS, number one, in the amount of $81,112 for the Grand Oak Reserve TERS. So you received your bill, finally?
No, I created the bill.
You created the bill, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'm sending it to y'all, this is your bill.
Okay.
Basically, we've got a little meeting with the, uh, city of Cleveland, get a few things straight, they hired some consultants, and basically we're trying to figure out how we get these things going about three years into it, so, um, I think we're on good path now, we've actually, the development has taken place, um, I think it's in its fourth year right now, and the values have really grown, uh, the tax base year is 2017, where I think y'all have the calculation sheet, you can see that the, uh, 2017 base tax value was $3,739,270. So basically, for us to give back any of the money that we receive, it has to exceed that, so that has to come out. So basically, for us to give back any of the money that we receive, it has to exceed that. So that has to come out and then the difference times our tax rate, times sixty percent. So that's the basic formula that we use. We pay into it, this will be our third year of pay. We kind of pay after the fact because we don't, just like they were mentioned this morning, they have to pay their taxes before we can basically refund any taxes back to them. The TERS agreement is we agreed to refund sixty percent after that two thousand seventeen value exceeded. So you can see the twenty twenty one value was twenty eight million eight hundred thirty nine thousand three hundred twenty dollars. So that's obviously a, you know, twenty five million dollar jump. They built a lot of houses. They've done a lot of, a lot of concrete in, a lot of improvements. And these values are determined by the central price of district. It's not something that they give it. You know, this is something purely given by the, so we requested all the accounts that have paid in taxes. And I think we actually verified every account and we determined that the county collected, took in a hundred and fifty four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars in gross taxes. Uh, you can see that second deduction is the praise value of the delinquent accounts for twenty one. We had some accounts that hadn't paid as the, the cutoff. So if they didn't pay in, we're not going to give them credit for refunding. And a couple of those are like, I think one of them was personal property of one of the stores up there. I'm not sure why they haven't paid in, but it's a five hundred thousand dollar account. It probably needs to be followed up with our delinquent tax attorneys, which I will visit with them about that. And then one was the city of Cleveland who had bought a piece of property from the developer. I don't think they even realized that they were paying twenty, twenty taxes. So I pointed that out to them as well. So.
That's probably the fire station.
And it was, well, it's actually behind the store.
That's fire station.
So that is a fire station, but the developer didn't pay it while they own it. The city, of course, has exempted, but whoever owned it on January one had to pay the taxes. They sold it to the city in August. So it didn't carry an exemption for the full year. So just pointing those things out. So we, we took those out of the form and we'll catch it up next year, you know, whenever, but we don't ever go back and readdress those things. If they hadn't taken by a certain time, because you, if not, you'd never get these things, things done. So when you take out that seven hundred thousand, take out the base for seventeen, so the captured value is twenty four million three hundred ninety eight thousand seven twenty. We do our twenty one tax rate, which was, you know, the point zero five four four, whatever, that came up with a gross tax of a hundred thirty five thousand one eighty seven. But like I told you before, we actually collected one fifty four because we didn't take out the three million dollars. So we collected one fifty four. We're now paying them sixty percent of that hundred thirty five, which comes out to the eighty one thousand one hundred twelve dollars. And as you recall, this contribution is capped, I think, at twenty five million dollars. If they never grow to that, if they never get to that and they have to pay their taxes, you never basically re, it's kind of like a rebate back to them. Once you pay, you get it back. So the project's working. They've taken, like you said, undevelopable land. There's a lot of houses out there. There's a lot of development. They brought in some commercial development. They're creating some value and, but honestly, I'm surprised at what face it's spending with the.
It's taken off. It's taken off quite well.
They got some good outlook. So this is something that's probably going to be around another at least twenty seven years or so to, to deal with. And we've already looked at the anticipated value for twenty twenty two and it comes in at some forty million. So we've already seen them twenty eight million to forty million. Next year is probably going to be somewhere in the hundred and twenty thousand dollar range if they, they pay in and all that stuff. So we're collecting it and then we're refunding it back to them. I've also sent the bill to the city of Cleveland. Their rate was higher at seventy seven cents, so naturally they owe like a hundred thousand dollars, whereas we're paying in eighty one thousand. So I hereby recommend, after certifying that we receive these payments following what, you know, with the guidelines, it seems like they've met the requirements. So I am recommending at this point that the Commissioners authorize the payment of eighty one thousand one twenty for the twenty one.
It's one twelve or one twenty.
One twelve, sorry.
All right. Any discussion?
Thank you much.
Got a motion from Bruce, second David to approve. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Rick, thank you for the discussion that we haven't seen the last of these.
No, it's a, and again, it's kind of like what they projected, even though we're not quite up to what they were thinking. I think they were a little more aggressive. But also want to bring to your attention, they, you know, originally part of the plan was, you know, there's a golf course, there's supposed to be some apartments. But in talking with the city of Cleveland, I found out that they've done two amendments to that agreement. The apartments are no longer going to be built.
Okay.
There's some other things that they've done. The other interesting thing is the developer is not drawing any of that money out. We put in now two years and they have not drawn any of that money out. I'm not even sure who our, the county's representative on that board is, but I think we need to kind of monitor a little closer because they're having articles that are changing, even if the agreement was done some four years ago.
I believe Judge Kirkham was our representative.
I think at the time I recall that that was, so want to make sure we still have a representative, you know, on, on, on board that. And I would, I would suggest we get some kind of reporting or a little more information because it's a pretty significant project now that's even going to get bigger.
Yeah. Okay. And maybe if we'll put that on the next consideration for a represented returns.
Yeah, just make sure things.
Is that a, you know, Judge Kirkham's kind of.
Yeah, I understand. And I don't think their board is regularly meeting, but I know they have hired these consultants and they're paying them pretty hefty six-figure fee to represent them. Now they're coming in and saying this is what should have been done. They're trying to get everything up to speed. So again, I don't want to learn four years later that we were supposed to send this report in.
Yeah.
You know, that's why I'm cautioning us to kind of use this as a learning experience for any new agreements that we enter into. Because there is some ongoing obligations on the county and the city to, to report these, because the controller reports these once a year to legislature.
Right. So now we had a lesson today on three eighty ones, TERS. We got any fits today?
No bits, no moods. No moods on the table.
Yeah, okay. And we do, and we're going to see some more of them. So the city of Dayton is entertaining the, the notion of entering to a.
My understanding is after reading into the controller, really on the city to do the reporting. We're kind of a participant, but the city pretty much originates these things from the ones that we dealt with so far. So just wanted to indicate that as well.
You know, being in the municipality, I can't see why not.
Yeah. They got a few more people than we got.
Yeah. All right. Number six, uh, Brother Rick, consider approve the imposition of optional Texas Department motor vehicle fees for calendar year twenty twenty three. Option A is no change and option B is Commissioners Court approve the fee change for twenty twenty three.
And President, we're collecting ten dollars for every vehicle that's registered. I can tell you, registrations have grown exponentially. So you're generating more and more funds. Not, my personal opinion is we don't want to get into the child safety deal. We've looked at that deal several times. While that's a good purpose, the administration of it more or less kills any momentum you get, because then you got to differentiate what school district gets what, because you're collecting as a county. But it may all be in one particular school district and you have to start divvying it up, who gets what and all that. And to me, it could take a lot of administration to just initiate, you know, a little bit of figures. So I would not recommend that you go into that. I would recommend it to standard your ten dollars, but it can't.
Transportation project fees here in section five or two for that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of what that is. I've just, I've just been exposed to the child safety fee.
And of course, it really. Looked like an option that we have.
Yeah.
Before us.
Yes. But it's applicable to there rises Cameron, El Paso, Godango, and Webb counties only. So I'll see us, I think Lundy County's.
Three dollars.
Right. And I'm not sure what all those have in common, but they seem to be, you know, San Antonio and south. So it could be some.
Gotcha.
Okay. Got a motion from Greg. I think David got you before that, Bruce. Motion Greg, save from David to approve with no change. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, Greg. That motion carries. Number seven, Commissioner Karbowski, consider approve county road easement along County Road one ninety from the intersection consistent water line on FM seven seventy approximately nineteen hundred eighty feet for utility water line extension service. What's it good with Bruce?
Yeah, it's about an outcome before me with this first, their first drawing was over the top of my culverts. And uh, but this one, that wouldn't work. He sent me another plan that I'm in agreeance with, going underneath our culverts, giving enough distance. And also type underneath the road for casing, pre-entcasement. And which is under our overreach or some of these regulations. I mean, so I make a motion. So.
Got a motion from Bruce, saving David to approve. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, uh, from Judge Fuller, JP six, consider approve the annual renewal of CO logic cop sink in the amount of forty seven hundred and seventy three dollars sixty cents be paid for the JP Technology Fund for Concomitant Precinct Six Department. Angela, those funds there. Motion from David. Save from Greg, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, consider approve the purchase of a file server for storage of body camera footage at the approximate cost of seven hundred fifty dollars. The cameras were purchased from the JP, JP Technology Fund. We are asking the file server to be purchased from the same fund for Concomitant Precinct Six. Pretty self-explanatory. Any discussion?
Thank you much.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce, save from David to approve. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number ten, from Mr. Douglas, consider approve update to the covert resolution. This all will be good.
Well, this is the second time around.
Yeah.
In last meeting, it was titled, I went back and did some work on folks' concerns that the previous document only recognized stabilized sand. We've gone back in there at suggestion from some of the commissioners that we will accept stabilized sand, limestone road based material or crushed concrete. We've also added, if you work it, the resolution on item number N. And that, that is suggested from the commissioner also. And that gives the commissioners in the precinct, you've always had this, right? Particularly Mr. Arthur and Mr. Karbowski, they do a lot of their own cover installation. Item N basically says that the commissioner has a right to change anything in this regulation that he chooses. So that's the revised document. How do you feel about?
I'd like to work here further side.
Motion, Greg, save from David to approve the current or the proposed gold resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Now, number eleven, we need to have a public hearing. Someone asked that we move out regular session at this time for a public hearing. And I believe I need a motion to do so.
Okay.
Got a motion from Greg.
Sex.
Saving Bruce to move into a public hearing. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Okay, we are moving into a public hearing and Mr. Kimbrough is here with us today to discuss some of the chapter three, twelve, tax code, tax tech code of chapter three eighty one. Once again, since we're getting off into this realm of uh, for lack of better words, abatements, you know, and to me, that's kind of a facetious word in, in a way, because there's so many of them out there. It's, it's constitutionally construed as low lying fruit, but there it is again, that it's a tool in the toolbox. So Chuck, if you would, can you come up and help us with this, please?
Please, Court.
Yes.
The purpose of this public hearing is to discuss, propose, listen to the people and also discuss proposed guidelines and criteria. Actual power is a rock, and it is. Liberty County, Texas, guidelines and criteria for tax abatement and other economics development. We have dated the tax policy on your, economic development policy on your website. I think it was enacted in.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty fifteen.
No, I think sixteen.
Sixteen, anyway, is a tax code, chapter three, twelve, the tax code, is where the county tax abatement, the primary authority, how to do it, these lists. And you cannot engage in tax abatement unless you enact guidelines and criteria for tax abatement, the policy segments, about how you're going to view the matter. And uh, guidelines have a shelf life that lasts for two years. If you have active guidelines and then they expire and within the active period of the guidelines, you approve a tax abatement agreement transaction and then the guidelines expired thereafter, that's okay. The constitutional power of contract makes the tax abatement agreement stay effective and operable even though the guidelines have expired. But you're, you need to remember that guidelines and criteria for tax abatement lasts for two years. So keep that in your head. Legislation does change the law from time to time, see.
Every two years.
Okay. However, as you saw this morning on the Liberty Capstone matter, there's another law that gives authority pursuant to the constitutional provisions of the state of Texas. There's another law that gives the power to counties to economic development activities. And that's chapter three eighty one of the local government. That Liberty Capstone matter was that chapter three eighty one agreement. That's not a tax abatement agreement. Remember, Liberty Cat, Liberty Capstone is supposed to pay a hundred percent of the taxes. And then if they do that, plus jobs and other things, then they get an economic development grant if they're in compliance with three eighty one. Tax abatement means they don't have to pay. Some are all pinned upon a negotiation. They're assessed taxes. Chapter three eighty one is really the statute, set of statutes that provides the underpinning for all of county economic development. It sits several places. That a county went to lawful important economic development programs that the body, Commissioners Court, as, as the governing body, decides is a policy issue or, or important. Legislative standpoint, so to speak. In chapter three eighty one, list what you can do. Well, you can, three eighty one says, engage in tax abatement under chapter three, twelve of the tax code. And chapter three, twelve is the really the how to do tax abatement rules. We're back to three eighty one. What else does it say? You can make loans and grants of money. You can make loans and grants of money for economic development. Loans, it doesn't say what kind of loan. It doesn't say secured or unsecured. It doesn't say with or without interest, or with interest, how much interest, things like that. That's left to the body. It's, uh, you can make grants of money for economic development purposes, like the Liberty Capstone matter. You can use public resources, staff, advertising, things like that for public economic development. And there are a host of other specific things, like a child advocacy center, for instance. CASA, you know, the, 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 the CASA group's always advocated child advocacy center, and there are other things. But the key deal is tax abatement, loans and grants, public money, and using county staff to help promote economic development, not just for the county, but even in the region. It's no requirement under chapter three eighty one to have guidelines and criteria, a policy statement. There is under chapter three twelve, to do tax abatement, you must have the policy statement in place, and it lasts for two years. So I recommended to the county judge and county attorney that if we're gonna look at guidelines, if you were required to have guidelines for three twelve tax abatement, why don't you have in the same document guidelines for three eighty one grants? So this Commissioners Court can lay down the policy factors and the requirements particularly for the applications that come in. So the document in front of you for a public hearing has a photo on page one, and then the, the document itself has the title that I told you about before, attached to the exhibit. Liberty County, Texas Guidelines and Criteria for Tax Abatement and Other Economic Development. Base number is five. It goes all the way to page number forty two, which includes the appendix, which is a, contains a post developer application. Yeah. I'm getting this is a public hearing and I'm doing all the talking, so.
Okay. Well, members of the public will be given the opportunity to be heard regarding the content of proposed approval and adoption of the guidelines being considered by the Fisher's Court.
The, 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 the document, uh, was posted on your website, and also the notice, special notice, went up on your website. Just make it come by your office and get a copy of it.
Right. So. So if anybody has anything to say, now's the time.
When can these be changed?
Adopted today, when can make the change? They're adopted today, they last for two years. At the very next meeting, the Commissioners Court, they could be addressed for amendment, but it takes a three-fourths majority vote for that to happen. According to chapter three twelve.
Yes, sir.
Now, chapter three eighty one, it doesn't have, you know, this sort of county's doing a policy for chapter three eighty one of the missing document. The tax code says, while they're running, if you want to change and modify on the term, terminate three, three quarters of five. Let's back on that. Three and a five or four?
Three and a five.
Okay.
Yeah.
While they're running.
Anybody? Any discussion? Comments?
So in two years, we'll have to reevaluate this, relook at it and reapprove.
Yeah.
You should, yes, sir, you should, you should now. Or explain this relaxed matter about there are more, more things coming, more. And what he, what he meant was there are more developers that are gonna throw paper at it. This is the document that makes it work with that. Okay? This is the document that tells the developers precisely, specifically, what we want to see from them in their applications. And several times in this document, I think four, four different times, two for three eighty one agreements and two for tax abatement, some of three twelve. It says flat out what the law says. You are more or ever obligated to do with you to grant a tax abatement, to grant a check for three eighty one agreement. It warms down every time. More lawful authority to consider it, more inherent discretion, investment, this judgment whether to do it. You are not, repeat, are never required to do it, to grant an economic development incentive to a developer, whether it's tax abatement or a grant or loan of public funds or anything else that's authorized by them. You cannot do it. Unless you decide at that point in time, in your best judgment, business judgment and discretion, and within your lawful authority, that is what you know of it. I don't understand it, now.
We can say no.
It's, it's in there four times.
Yeah.
It's avoided, it's in there. It's in the statute, so. Okay. And whether you do it or not, circumstances change. The pandemic did that. Many of your operating procedures changed because of the pandemic. Like Zoom meetings. Same thing about economic development. You could be very, very conservative about economic, not doing much of it. And then all of a sudden, a sea changing development with lots and lots of jobs, for instance, maybe comes to your county, or fixing that coming to your county. It's the occupant is comp legs in terms of lots of pages and lots of things that the developer has to be aware of. But to make an application and put an application. But when the big one comes, this is the comprehensive document that I recommend you do and you have, because you're gonna need it.
Yeah.
To be able to evaluate those types of complex, uh, positions.
It, it kind of boils down to this. We're not controlling development, we're managing. And it, uh, as these requests come in, we have some rumors to go back.
Then your existing on your website policy has minimums, you gotta pay its number of jobs, it's fifty thousand, I believe, in infrastructure or taxable value. This document doesn't do that. This document says, whatever the law allows, we'll consider what we really want you to tell us about how it's gonna go. What incentives you're gonna give the county? Are you gonna pay all of our consultant and attorney's fees? Are you going to, uh, agree to minimum infrastructure values in the ground on the first year of the tax abatement period? Uh, and a certain minimum, uh, uh, infrastructure in the ground at the last day of the last year of the tax abatement period? Are you gonna commit to jobs? Without telling us how many, are you gonna commit? As a contract binding promise. A bunch of other things. Everything that the law allows to be eligible for tax abatement, for instance, is included in this document. Except land. Land can be eligible for tax abatement, but we never recommend that. We want you to hold back and say, that's ineligible. You can grant a variance if you wanted to, do the right kind of project. But I want to call out to your attention that land is not listed as eligible property. The law allows it with your discretion. We did not include that. Why? Because the first time they start turning dirt, that changes from exempt, for instance, so you at least you get the benefit from, from that. Next, your existing, uh, policy on your website said, I think, I think I'm right, minimum value fifty thousand. That's way low right now. Most, most of the, most of the time, it's several million dollars. Uh, will be the minimum that you'll have to, the developer will have to project before you're even obligated to look at the application. I entered one million dollars. A minimum taxable value of one million dollars. But you can always grant a variance. You can need.
Okay.
Lawful authority, discretion, investment, this judgment.
Yes, sir.
And there are standards listed in the document about how you, uh, without doing a variance, it must be by public means, though. So to conclude, you want the developer to not give you a couple of marketing sheets and come into California. You want a detailed stack of stuff about what they're gonna do in order to get what they're asking for in terms of abatement or economic incentive. And this is the document that lays out for the developer what they have to say on the application.
Okay.
And I must also say that for tax abatement, the tax code says you can charge an application fee of a thousand dollars, maximum, maximum a thousand dollars. So it says a thousand dollars, non-refund. Under chapter three eighty one, there's no such fee.
Right.
So you don't, you can't really charge. Questions?
Anybody?
It's got a photo work. Also documented tax at the very end, almost the very end, Judge Knight, of the documented exhibition number. For the exhibit. Page number thirty seven, there's a certificate of adoption if it's approved for you and the county for the sign. I recommend approving.
Okay. Well, we had to close the public hearing first.
Yes, sir.
And we'll move on to the next item, is that correct?
Yeah. Just in the change, that takes three fourths of the court. If, if, if the guidelines are running during the two-year period, if you want to change them during the operational period of the guidelines, three fourths, I believe, is what the statute says.
Five members or four?
Of the five, I don't know if you want to show.
So it takes three, it's three, it's take three commissioners and the county judges to vote.
Well, look, there's three. Yeah, a judge might not want to.
I don't think you have to, to get three fourths. Takes four. Whatever.
Three, three only gives you sixty percent. Whatever the numbers say. It's three fourths.
That's if we want to change anything during.
Yeah. It's rare, it's rare, I've seen a change.
Yeah.
This document says, tell us, tell us, tell us about all this stuff. What you're obligated to do with this document is nothing, under your discretion. But you're willing, willing to consider everything that the law allows.
Right.
But you're telling them upfront that you don't, you don't want land to be thought of as eligible property protection.
Right.
Which can grant a variance for that. So it'd be very rare for this document to be amended during the two-year period, unless it was just too long for you to.
So I wonder, is something differences between chapter three twelve and three eighty one? Buying both these into one? Even the.
When I do, when I draft, uh, tax abatement agreements, the title, the document is tax abatement and economic development agreement. And the reason that is so is because we try to get financial incentives, money paid by the company to the county in lots of areas, but significant evidence, even over get a tax abatement. For instance, most of all costs, including the twenty six. All of this. Newspaper publication fees, things like, things like that.
Okay. All right. Nobody wants to say anything? David? No.
Ground forever like this two-year shelf life.
Yes, sir.
You just need to get in step.
Okay. All right. Okay. Actually, we need to take a vote to move out of the public hearing, or?
Sure.
Yeah, let's move.
I'll move.
Okay, let's move, uh, Greg made the motion, made a second from Bruce, move out of the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Okay, we're out. Public reading back to the regular session. And number twelve, just what, uh, Mr. Kimbrough has discussed with his prior, the discussion potential actions shall occur regarding the approval and adoption of the Liberty County Texas Guidelines and Criteria for Tax Abatement and Other Economic Development. And this will be presented for two years. Correct, Matthew?
That's correct.
Okay. And my recommendation is, yes.
Let's move to the report.
Okay, you got a motion from Greg. He's second, say from Bruce to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Thank you, gentlemen. We're back in compliance, even though we weren't really that bad.
Has been posted on your website with the vote.
Yes, sir. Okay, D, you got that? Yeah. She said she's got it. Thank you. Okay. Number thirteen, uh, consider to approve a resolution certified in the county. Liberty has made a grant to Interfaith Ministries for Gregor Houston for their meals on wheels. Program, program provides home delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and or have a disability. This match, uh, this is a match grant of five hundred dollars. And this is, we do it every year.
Same.
Got a motion, David, say from Bruce to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise.
The Interfaith Ministries, um, the best that is not seen that long enough, so for any guy to have it every time.
Good luck.
We did, we've been, I wonder if they have another name? And one, we've been done any? Okay, I'm on you.
Okay.
But I'll ask one, I'll look at it.
Okay, number fourteen, consider approve resolution certified that County Liberty has made a grant to Gracianity for South Liberty County for their meals on wheels. Program, program provides home delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and or have a disability.
Thank you, motion to approve.
Motion David, say from Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen, consider approve a resolution certifying Calibri has made a grant to Cleveland Senior Citizens Organization for their Meals on Wheels Program. Program provides home delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly or have a disability. I'm looking to approve.
Motion David.
Yes. Motion David, second from Greg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, from Sheriff Rader. Boy, I only got to you, Sheriff.
That's all right.
Yeah. Consider approve a new range contract with US Home Mid Security effective nine fifteen twenty twenty-two through nine fourteen twenty twenty-three. Yearly contract value is now forty thousand one hundred seventy dollars. And I know that we have one of the best agents in the area.
Thank the people that work out there, Commissioner, that gave us a lot, a better lot for us. But this is actually Fisher's Court approved the contract last year. It's a five-year contract, but this is a renewal. It's the notice of intent exercised the second year of the auction.
Yes, sir.
That you'll just need to sign a piece of claim, right? Make a motion for it.
Say, say.
Motion David, second from Bruce. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next one's from Mr. Dennis. Thought you were gonna get away easy today, didn't you? Yeah. Number seventeen, consider approve Comcast Enterprise Services Master Services Agreement. Internet services at the new sheriff's offices and JP three X facilities located at five fifty-two eleven North Main Street. That's highway one forty-six north town, but still inside of Miss City.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So this is just your standard internet contract. So we get some data and internet out to the new sheriff's office name. So this is a new service connection. That's what this is. And a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, say from David to approve. Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Thank you. Number eighteen, uh, from Mr. C. Consider to approve a second amendment of lease spaces between Liberty County and the Board of Regents and University of Texas. System for the use and benefit of the University of Texas Medical Branch. For two thousand square feet of office space, five oh one Palmer Street, Liberty County, Liberty, Texas. This is for the WIC program. Women, infants and children's program. And this is a renewal. Matthew, I believe more or less. Yeah. Motion for David, second from Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen, Mr. C. Consider and approve the options available to purchase law enforcement vehicles. After you come on up. We've had some. I mean, I've seen some strange things in my life in this past year. But, uh. We, we ordered vehicles, Mr. Public's information. Uh, October first, we ordered nineteen vehicles from Ford. About a week ago, I get the location from Ford that they're canceling our order. Chief, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, or whatever, you know, that they're canceling our order. They're not going to make any more twenty twenty two vehicles. And we're out of luck. And if we want a new vehicle from Ford, it'd be a twenty twenty three and the, the price tag will go up. So we're making a different, we're making a, a different step. Another step in another direction comes in. Law enforcement needs vehicles if we ain't got them. Okay. So Stephanie, what are our options?
Well, um, I'm here to, to present and let everyone know that, you know, was canceled. It was a, a, a purchase order to Sills B Ford. For eight hundred fifty nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars fifty eight cents. That was for eighteen law enforcement vehicles along with some additional equipment purchased from them and installation. Uh, once we got notification of this last week. And Mr. Hetero took it upon himself to see what he could find. And he has a couple of options available that I think the court should consider. Uh, because, uh, obviously we can't commit to anything that will be in after September thirtieth this year. So what he has found, I believe, is on the ground and available for purchase. So John.
We've got two more to many more.
All right, just start off, um, that asked me to take a look at trying to find some more vehicles once, once we got these other eighteen canceled. So I reached out to one of the dealers that I had used this past time to get the twenty five. He did, he did say he had some Dodge, uh, Durangos and Chargers on the lot that he could. Sell us right now, not have to wait. The only big thing though is the prices from last year to this year. It's substantial between three to seven thousand dollars. So that's the only difference. And then, uh. With them having all the, you don't have to wait to have a order. Now it'll still take a while to get them delivered to us and get them out. But the prices you see there is kind of a, one was for Durango or I think the total was for Durango and then Chargers and there was one for a pickup truck. Pickup truck, I think is more of a executive level truck. So we'll probably have to look at that one different. If we get approved by y'all to go forward and maybe reallocate that money to purchase more vehicles.
How many Chargers is this?
They have plenty of Chargers. We got, they got plenty.
Well, you've got a price of one hundred ninety thousand. What is that? That's ten, I guess.
Yeah, that was ten. Now, mind you, when I called the next day, the, the, the Ringos, they already lost one of those. There were like eight. The next day was seven. Today, I have not checked. There may be six or five. So every day they're going down with the, with the Ringos. Now the Chargers, they have plenty of, so.
Oh, I would say, I will say, if we're using general, uh, regular funds and not special funding for this, these are, uh. Available off the buy board cooperative. And if we're needing to, um, get approval and then go to them with a P O. And they, some of these are gone, some that he's been quoted already. Perhaps you want to say, um, if you make an approval for an amount not to exceed.
This is about. Judge, I'd like to remind you, this is not just for sheriff's office. This takes care of the constable.
Yes, sir. Yeah, one thing to be clear, this is money from last year. Yeah. It's already allocated in the budget, just sitting there.
No, I, I like to speak, trying to find these vehicles. We did possibly find some Tahos that are same price, maybe, uh. Was forty thousand five hundred was what the last ones we purchased. And I would like to maybe reach out and try to get some Tahos because they're equal or same price as these. I don't believe we're limiting just to the dogs because the Tahos are definitely better. I want to at least have the money allocated. If we can, reach out, maybe get them back.
Yeah.
So with these totals, are we staying within the original P O?
I don't, I don't think so because of the price for two thousand twenty one, it's an average of three to seven thousand dollars.
So the original P O, what you said was, I think, eight hundred fifty nine thousand.
Yes, but that was also, that included additional equipment and installation of that equipment and additional equipment we'd be bringing Sills B. So that cost was for eighteen vehicles and some upfitting.
And just the vehicles here is.
Uh, and then, uh, another question we have. Is this, if the equipment has a stand or a different model of vehicle?
It is all interchangeable with the exception of computer stand, which, uh. Captain like to claim it has been read it. You can swap those out with no cost, no price difference.
That was our vendor, but I don't know what the constable was used on.
We don't even know what our, our nine that we would go with.
Everything else is pretty much, I can't, it's Sills B. Everything vehicle specific was being bought from them. I know on our end, the only thing that was vehicle specific was the computer stand, which is probably going to be the same in the constables, but I don't know who they, what company they used to purchase this stuff from. When we got word this several months ago, it was up in the air. I already called the guy. I said, hey, you got to switch part of our end. He said, send us back what you got. I said, well, please, it's a stand.
And another thing, how crucial it is, since y'all even approved these last time, we've lost four vehicles since then to motors to be told about. So. It's very, very critical that we, we at least take a look, so.
I'll, Angela, um, so to answer your question, the total vehicles only to Sills B that were canceled, six hundred and seventy one thousand seven hundred sixty three dollars and sixty cents. The additional equipment and installation that was going to be provided to Sill, from Sills B was a hundred and eighty seven thousand three hundred and forty three. I do want to point out, um, I think the court would like to know that in addition to that purchase. Approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of equipment was purchased by the constables and sheriff's office. And they received the majority of that expecting to get vehicles to upfit.
Yeah.
So I'm just letting you know.
We expect you to get the vehicles too, okay?
The difference is price and we're using last year's money. We come up with more money this year to put into it.
About what we have allocated. That's just it.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have to trim this down to meet what our original P O was. Or the money that was allocated for these to go on right now with the money. Obviously that we can, we can buy things on here.
It looks like a difference of at least a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that it's cut.
Well, we'll just stretch a dollar till it reaches about that.
That's the difference between the prices of the vehicles that we were. And didn't include installation and equipment that, that's the other addition.
Yeah, we're able to just check and see how much money there's still left or mine equipment for, to the, to the dollar.
By no means figure how many we can get. By no means, I, I would think this court doesn't want to cut the amount of vehicles. But when we've already allotted the money.
And we've already received about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of equipment for the vehicles that are here on county property waiting for vehicles.
I'll just actually look for it hopefully to, to go out, go out and try to get more detailed cost.
So I would, I would like to make a motion to, um, allow. Purchasing department, uh, department to go out and spend the rest of the money that we have allocated for this. And whatever makes us each other.
You're out there, Sheriff.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry. This is a conversation.
We want to allow to allocate the, the funding that's already been approved or if you use it to buy what you need.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's where you got it, Matthew.
Without coming back to court for permission, okay.
As long as we understand that, that motion.
Yeah, I got it.
I believe she does.
Yes.
Yeah. I believe I got a motion from Bruce and a second from David on that. Okay.
That will include the sheriff's and.
And constables, correct.
But he doesn't care what vehicles they want.
I don't know. Sheriff, do you want to drive Chargers? You're not, you're not talking about.
I'll give a charger.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And John, thank you. Stephanie, thank you. Angela, thank you. Okay, number twenty for Mr. C. Consider to approve listing bids for culverts. Uh, Stephanie, I don't get you through yet.
I'm sorry. Yes, uh, we had bid that expires, uh, the, near the end of this month. So we'll be going back out to bid for culverts. Uh, I know we'll contract for culverts for the next year. So. Um, I would advise, I believe it's two commissioners that purchase from Matt Headley, that you go ahead and purchase what you need for, uh. Few weeks' time before we can get another bid out. Don't worry. It shouldn't be long.
But this is only, uh.
If I'm like, if I'm like the other commissioner, we're out of money.
So I have time.
Yeah, I, I hope that we find. Suitable people on, on buying culverts from that have these things or can get them in a timely manner. Last year, we had a lot of problems with ordering from the designated buyer that could not supply. Which was cold.
So possibly we should look at awarding a prime and an alternate if this prime cannot get an initiation amount of time.
All we're doing right now is proving that they solicit.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Twenty one from Mr. Poston, our county attorney. Consider to approve acceptance letter and renewal agreement between Liberty County and Crowder Gulf. Portisaster debris clearance and removal services. This is kind of a long time ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, this is our first of three one year renewal periods with critical. So it's just, uh, up to court. I mean, this is our, and to use the way you need to take some action.
I believe we better, okay. Although.
And it does expire, our term expires the third first.
Yeah. And we got Sahara Dust right now, so I'm happy.
I can motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second Greg to approve. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. I know it. Number twenty two from Mr. Poston, uh, consider to approve transfer of two. New development block grant disaster recovery programs, uh, grants received by Liberty County. From Hurricane Ike, I knew this been a while back. For rehabilitation of Dayton Park Apartments from Dayton Park Ventures Limited to Fairfield Residential. So there is, there was name change. Matthew?
I believe they were, and, and I'm sorry, I, I didn't, um, heard on this personally, but, uh, um. I believe Fairfield bought.
Yeah.
Uh, or is buying, uh, the apartment complex there. If, if it's okay, I do have some, some questions about this if we could. If we could put this on hold, uh, I, I have some questions from our green administrators about this too.
Let's table this.
Make a motion to table.
Got a motion from Bruce, second Greg to, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty three from Mr. C or Stephanie. Let's go take actual proposed changes for the new Liberty County Sheriff's Office Annex Project. And Sheriff, we're getting down to the last come and get me on these, I believe.
Big stuff, sir.
I mean, we, we know we're gonna have them. That's just nature of the beast. It's, uh, it all gets down to digging for that pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. Yeah.
Sheriff, we're having money. Um, I did speak to the ring about this yesterday and, uh. We have some price overruns that are concerning. Um, and I don't think we can continue to have this many price overruns, over, over budget. In the general sense of all of the budget, the money that was allocated for this project. So. Anyway, that's where we're at right now. He said he could approve it, uh, but it'll be based on if he can find the money. Because we're, we're at of what we allocated. And I'm not sure how much more is going to go, but.
I believe I got a pretty good assurance yesterday, Sheriff, that this is the last come and get me.
That's what they told us.
Yeah.
That's what they keep telling us.
If they did, I have a hotel they could come visit.
Can we, uh, ask Devin to stand up and what that's part of delaying the project?
I don't want to table this simply because we need to finish the project.
I can make a motion to accept all the conditions that we want to find the money.
Can I, uh, Devin, what does that mean? This is, uh, Devin, the project manager of the county. What does that mean for you? For these were required changes that needed to happen? Is it going to stop? If we're going to have to wait and stop progress until we have confirmation?
Yes, and I'll have to give his, I'll just have to get his, I told him that was probably going to be the answer from them. Is that they needed this immediately. So.
I mean, we just want, we can't really stop, but very, like.
There's going to be, when we, when we, but it's our cause delaying a project, stopping work, uh, we are responsible for, uh, the additional cost of being at the job site. More days than they had planned and allowed, uh, contract. That, that just needs to be.
Even though it's went over budget.
I want to, I want to verify, because based on yesterday, what we're talking about, the allocation that you need to cover this. Is the ninety four to ninety four seventy three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So the original, just so everyone's aware, the original G M P for the guaranteed maximum price that we were given was eighteen million eight hundred ninety six dollars, seven hundred and seventy two dollars. And we've had two changes that have come to port and increased the price. Uh, this would be the third price increase, bringing the new G M P to nineteen million one hundred forty eight dollars, five hundred sixty and twelve cents.
That's part of the picture, keeping in mind that that whole budget that we have for this project also included the radio tower, which came in over budget. Um, and some other things that, that were, there were a few things that came in under budget. Um, so that's why I think you just said, let him. And see if we can find additional money. And then it's very, very imperative that we don't go over anymore. Unless it is absolutely necessary because that's just our minds. We refuse all the money that we, uh, borrowed to allocate to this project.
Devin, did you want to explain?
So a lot of the things that have come with this recent change were. I would say were unknown that because decisions weren't made sooner for the radio tower. Things were necessary to implement the activation of some of the things which, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. So if, if, if we don't do it, then obviously that there's going to be, they won't be able to function accordingly. Um, with the radios, with the. Cardinals, things of that nature. Um, so, you know. Cardinal nodes, things of that nature. Um, so, you know. I, I can't justify or explain why they're just now coming up. That's, that's on our side. These are only requested items that have to be done. Um, the fear is not making a decision where you're so close to the end, the subcontractors are leaving. So they can't guarantee a whole prices for so long. Cause if they, if they finish and walk away, then it's gonna cost more to come back to do somebody's added on. Yeah, so, um. Yeah.
But that his, his aggression was approved it online, uh, from the contingency that he finds the funds.
I think that's what I just made a motion to.
Yep.
Believe so. They've, uh, how long you anticipate that ever?
How, how long?
When's Wayne back in town?
He's not for two weeks, but, uh, I can get home.
Yeah.
So, like I said, we talked about it yesterday. And that was his initial thought was, go second, want to look, let's, let's see where he can grab them from.
But you can probably get it done pretty quick. If anybody can, you can.
I'll agree. All right, we got a motion for Bruce, second from David to, uh. Take action on his proposed changes and move forward, uh, for expedience to say, all favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next item, uh, number twenty-four from Mr. Douglas, consider conditional approval of final plat for Santa Fe subdivision section fourteen. Last we moved into executive session on this item, consultation. Play board. Why stick around for later? We might have cookies or something.
Attorney consultation?
Yeah, let's see, that will be. Consultation, attorney, it's five five one four zero seven. All right.
Make a motion to move into executive session.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Okay. Let's see, it's about one twenty. We're back in regular session. Uh, had to take a recess because it was lunchtime and we had some other business to attend to. But we are back in regular session once again. And we're on number twenty-five. Twenty-four, I'm sorry. Number twenty-four. Uh, that is, uh, consider conditional approval of final plat for Santa Fe subdivision section fourteen.
I'm moving, take no action. That is done.
Okay, you got a motion, Greg, take no action. Second. Second from Bruce, all favor say aye. Likewise, nays. You abstain? Yeah, okay. Sorry.
And it's the David's abstaining. So we've got, Jay, are you gonna vote?
I vote.
I'm gonna change it to a voter then. So we got three, four, and one abstain.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Number twenty-five, consider to approve acceptance of roads in Riverhead subdivision. Uh, Bruce, I guess you've had the opportunity to ride those.
Yes, I have. I met with the developer out there the other day. Rode through an excellent condition.
I wish we had a whole lot more like.
Oh, yeah, this, this is nice. Like that when you start putting some rooftops out there.
Y'all talking at the same time.
He made the motion. I second.
Sorry, David.
That's all. I just want to be sure that no, what, what a high caliber of road goes on.
Uh, we, I think everybody knows that.
Okay, we got a motion saying to accept the roads of the Riverhead subdivision. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-six, consider to approve amended earnest money contract purchase of eighteen oh one Trinity Street, Liberty, Texas. That was just. Three hundred dollars or something like that.
Two hundred ninety-eight, get some change above the eighteen hundred eighty thousand you all had approved.
Yeah. Okay. Motion Bruce, second from David. To approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-seven. Uh, consider to prove the purchase price of eighteen oh one Trinity Street, Liberty, Texas, seven five seven five two, including closing costs up to a hundred eighty-one thousand. Is that gonna cover everything? Motion Bruce, second David to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion to adjourn. I think you have a Bruce, second David, all favor say aye. We're adjourned.